Let's call raise, pledge the allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before I go into the citizens' open forum, this is Michelle's last meeting, if you don't know already.
Oh.
She's leaving us.
I'm old.
So she, just wanted to thank her for everything she's done for. She's been around quite a while. Do a lot of good stuff. We appreciate it, and I'm sure we all do. I could get a round of applause. Thank you, Michelle.
You're retired.
That'd be six, do you think that'll hold up?
No.
Welcome to the club.
Still working.
And I just wanted to add tomorrow's her last day, so she chose to spend her last day eve here.
Aw, thank you.
We appreciate that, too.
If I'd have known, I'd bake you a cake.
Thought about stopping at Publix, but I didn't think anybody would go for that. It'd be embarrassing, if I was me. But anyway, let's open it to the citizens' open forum. Anybody want to speak to the board? If anybody's going to speak to the board, please stand up and be sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give? Is the truce will help you before God? Thank you.
Great. So I'll close the open forum, because it doesn't look like there's any other citizens here. So, Michelle, it's all yours. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We have to approve the minutes of last meeting.
I move we approve the minutes of September 9th, 2020.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, that's over with.
Okay, this is case number annexation 2007, located in an incorporated Pinellas County in West Oldsmar, 3172 Huron Avenue. The property is located in West Oldsmar undeveloped and unincorporated area, Pinellas County. It's developed with duplex, and the city has annexed almost 240, uh, the 419 West Oldsmar parcels to date, um, which was that former mobile home park now known as Bayside Terrace. This is a request from the property owner to annex a property containing approximately .17 acres into the corporate limits of Oldsmar. It's located in West Oldsmar, Section 1, Block 17, Lot 18. It's contiguous to Oldsmar and access is available from Huron Avenue to SR 580. A substantial part of the boundaries of the parcel are contiguous with the boundary of the city. Water and service sewers are available to the property from the city, and solid waste collection is provided by an outside contractor. Notice of this annexation request has been forwarded to Safety Harbor in Pinellas County. The city can provide water and sewer, and has the ability to provide solid waste, fire, EMS, recreation, and library services when these services are required. Based on above discussions, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance annexing West Oldsmar, Section 1, Block 17, Lot 18.
Any questions?
None, no questions.
Any other questions, sir? Nope. Jared? Brenda?
No, sir.
How would entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion? I don't know if I know how to do it correctly, but... I'll entertain a motion that we approve annexation 20-7, as recommended at the property location. Do I need to say all this?
No. Not just the power of organization, recommended to city council. Recommended to city council.
Yes, recommended to the city council authorize the city attorney to prepare an ordinance annexing West Oldsmar, Section 1, Block 17, Lot 18.
I second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion carries.
Six.
Next.
This is case number LUZ 20-06. It's a rezoning request from C2 Commercial General to C3 Commercial Wholesale and Warehousing District for the Oldsmar Flea Market South property. It's located at 180 Racetrack Road. The subject property consists of two zoning and land use categories. The current zoning of the northern portion of the property is limited manufacturing M1 with a city land use designation of industrial limited, IL, and county designation of employment with target employment center overlay, which is considered the north property. This is the south portion of the property, which is zone Commercial General, C2. It is 13.13 acres, I believe, of the, 13.45 acres of the 19.46 acres of the Flea Market. It's currently zone Commercial General, C2, with the city land use designation of Commercial General and the county land use of retail services with target employment center overlay. The entire Flea Market property is approximately 19.46 acres in size and is the largest commercial site as you enter the city limits from Tampa Road and Racetrack Road. For the last 30 years, it's been operated as a flea market with several permanent retail businesses and multiple flea market weekend booths. The applicant is proposing to rezone the southern 13.45 acre portion of the site. It is surrounded by industrial uses on the north side and commercial uses to the west. To the east, it's adjacent to Racetrack Road, which serves as a border between Hillsboro and Pinellas County. There's an existing Circle K Shell gas station on the southeast corner adjacent to the site, and other commercial uses along Tampa Road to the south directly across from the subject property. It is a request for rezoning from Commercial General, C2, to Commercial Wholesale and Warehouse District, C3, of the southern 13.45 acre portion of the Flea Market site. The request for the rezoning is evaluated pursuant to Article 3, Section 3.15.3 Standards for Approval Land Development Code. The C3 Commercial Wholesale and Warehousing District is established to provide suitable areas for wholesaling, distribution, storage, and general services of a type and intensity requiring convenient access to principal thoroughfares and railroads. This district is intended as a distribution and storage center for products sold or serviced for retail or wholesale sales to a consumer, jobber, sales outlet, or wholesaler. Such districts shall be located in the community to ensure that the flow of heavy trucking to such an area will not be through residential districts. It is located at the intersection of Racetrack and Tampa Road, and they are designated as unrestricted thorough truck routes. The C3 uses are permitted under the M1 Limited Manufacturing District, which is a coterie zoning of the north portion of the Flea Market property. The amendment will not constitute a grant of a special privilege to an individual owner as the C3 zoning is transitional from the M1 uses to the north. Staff had made several requests for a future site plan, however, the applicant did not provide one. It is important to note that although historically plans have been provided, the city's land development code does not require one. The review for the rezoning was based solely on the allowable uses under the C3 zoning category and compatibility with the retail and services category under the countywide rules. It will not conflict with the needs of the neighborhood of the city as the C3 zoning is transitional from the M1 uses. We have, um, given you a list of the C3 zoning in Appendix A. And as I said, it is located on Tampa Road, so such, it is, um, subject to Tampa Road corridor guidelines. And so, since it's the city's main commercial thoroughfare, this corridor is of economic importance to the viability of the ci- city. It's located within the east end of the corridor, within an area which is referred to as a gateway from the east in the land development code, and therefore will be one of the first sites that people encounter when entering the city from Hillsboro. It's currently a commercial zone property adjacent to industrial and commercial uses. Future uses for this site under the proposed C3 zoning have not been provided at this time. The applicant will need to demonstrate during site plan approval that there are no adverse effects on other property in the area. The app, the amendment may deter the improvement or development of other properties and areas as the Tampa Bay Downs, which is north of the site, annexed 100 acres into the city. We indicated to Tampa Bay towns at the time that we had the ability to serve the property for development. Since we don't know what the plan is for developing the 19.46 acre Flea Market site or the impact it may have on the city's ability to serve, a future redevelopment of this scale within the city could produce either negative or positive effects. We're also amped up to determine if the amendment will adversely burden public facilities, including the traffic carrying capacities of streets in an unreasonable or disproportionate manner. The city in the past has entered into development agreements with applicants to assure that adequate facilities are available. We requested the applicant to enter into a development agreement, and the applicant refused to do so. He will be required to demonstrate that the future use will not adversely burden public facilities, including the traffic carrying capacities during site plan approval. The district boundaries are appropriately drawn with due regard to location and classifications of streets, ownership lines, existing improvements in the natural environment. The applicant will be required to plat the property for future development. We're unable to predict what impacts this rezoning could produce as the applicant has not provided a site plan outlining the proposed uses on this 13.45 acre parcel and 19.46 acre parcel in general. The applicant will need to demonstrate during site plan approval that there are no adverse effects on the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of Oldsmar. Current zoning for the subject property is C2 Commercial General. Per City of Oldsmar's Land Development Code Section prohibited uses, wholesaling as a principal use and manufacturing uses are prohibited within the C2 zoning category. The applicant is requesting rezoning to C3 Commercial Warehouse and Wholesale so that some of these currently prohibited uses could be allowed. The underlying land use category for the subject property is Commercial General. It's a countywide equivalent. For the same category is Retail and Services, which permit uses such as office, retail, commercial, commercial, business service. The C3 zoning category allows a list of uses found in Appendix A of this report. Most of these uses are permitted under the countywide land use Retail and Services. Most of the C3 uses are more compatible with the industrial land use category. Since the applicant's only proposing a zoning amendment, staff recommends adding a restriction to the uses proposed by the applicant, limiting development only to those uses within C3 category that are compatible with Retail and Services. Based on above discussion and review against the standards outlined in Section 3.15.3 of the Land Development Code, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from Commercial General, C2, to C3 Commercial Wholesale and Warehouse. That's on the 13.45 acres, subject to the following conditions. Should the proposed use for the subject property not be compatible with the Retail and Services category under the countywide rules, a land use amendment would be required. And future site plan approval is subject to the Tampa Road corridor requirements. The applicant's representative is here.
This to him before, haven't we?
Yes.
So Brenda, have you got any questions for Michelle?
No.
Jared? Um, I want to call you out so bad. Devin, have you got any questions?
Passons? Yeah, my, my question is, um, what, in your opinion, what would, why, why would we want to change this?
Um, based on the staff report, by looking at it, is a transition area from the M1 to C3. Um, there's no reason why we couldn't say that that would be compatible.
Okay. Um, and then when, when you say that the subject of the property not being compatible with Retail and Services...
Well, the countywide rules have a broader uses that they permit. So what we're saying is, and theoretically, they wouldn't be able to do something that would violate the countywide rules. So if he wants to do, go back to Retail and Services, or like a commercial type of, um, use, he would have to do a land use amendment.
So if, if it is getting changed from, I guess the question I have is if it, if it, what kind of changes could be made from its current use under C3?
It would be more of a wholesale and warehousing uses, um, conditional, it could have a microbrewery. You know, whatever, the Office General is, is pretty much office, um, small office type of, of a use. He could do, um, wholesale distribution. Now, I don't, there's certain uses. Let's see.
You can put a church in there. It's a conditional use.
I think churches are in everybody's for conditional use.
No crematoriums in it?
No.
I, I guess my question is, is this of benefit to the city in terms of what the city hopes would be developed on the property?
Do you want me?
You know, when we, um, when we're examining, examining, examining a zoning change, right? So the, the applicant has the, um, the right to apply for a zoning change. And in this case, we're examining based on the land development code to see if it's compatible use, and it's a transitional zoning. You have M1 to the north, and it's on a major corridor that has unrestricted truck traffic. And then, so because of the underlying, the underlying land use is already Retail and Services, and it doesn't conflict with the underlying land use. This is, the staff recommends approval because of the location and the, um, and the compatibility with the underlying land use for Retail and Services. So, you know, the restrictions that staff had recommended, um, um, adding are restrictions that are there anyway. It has to be compatible with the underlying countywide rules of Retail and Services, or you have to come back for a land use amendment. And if you come back for a land use amendment, it's not only just us, it's the county as well. And then, and then the other restriction was that, you know, it has to meet Tampa Road corridor requirements. So we have an extra overlay zoning district that requires very strict architectural and, um, aesthetic guidelines. And so, um, whatever is proposed on this as an allowable use has to come back to the technical review committee and the city council at two public hearings before it's approved. So at this stage, it's just asking for a zoning change from a C2 to C3. So that's why staff is supporting that. Did that make sense, Johnny Andrew?
It, it does. I, I, I guess the, I, I would have a question for the developer representative as well. But the, the, so, so if, if I, if, if somebody wanted to build a, a car wash there, that would, would that be allowed under C3?
I, I think a car wash is allowable under C2. So you could build a car wash right now. So if you look at the, in the Appendix A, it, it tells you what the C3 commercial, it's a Commercial Wholesale Warehouse District. And then it talks about all, all permitted uses in Office, General, then Nursery, Garden, Landscape Supplies. I'm on page, like, 8, I think. Cold storage and frozen food lockers, wholesale distribution, full service stations and automobile parts and sales, retail sales of products, assembly, um, you know, not quite a light manufacturing when you're manufacturing these goods, but it's the assembly of these scientific, optical, and electronic equipment. So you can keep reading that list. And then we, we did see maybe there would, maybe one item that, that may not be compatible with Retail and Services on the permitted use list according to what the countywide rules are. And that would be heavy equipment sale, service, and storage. Like, to try to meet our, the outdoor storage requirements and those sort of things, that would probably be, it would probably require a land use change at that point, for that one permitted use.
So like a storage, a storage facility would be allowed?
It would be allowed, but it still has to meet Tampa Road corridor requirements. So, you know, the Tampa Road corridor requirements address things like how much one-road parking is allowed, and what does the facade look like as it faces the Tampa Road? So, um, so, you know, that, the city has adopted, um, uh, regulations to, um, ensure that even some of those uses may look better than what you envision they might look like.
Can only hope. And how about like a car dealership? Would that?
Um, I don't...
That's in there.
Is it? I might have missed it.
So if it's, again, if it's a car dealership, then it requires to meet the Tampa Road corridor requirements as a car. I don't know.
Well, parts and sales and repairs.
Yeah, I didn't see a car dealership specifically.
You put a...
But it's a retail use.
I put a Home Depot in there, too.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
So you addressed a lot of the Tampa corridor requirements. We do that?
Um, the, it's my understanding that it goes to the TRC, the Technical...
City of Oldsmar.
Yeah, oh, yes. Oh, yes. The TRC. It goes through, of course, the planning department first, right? And then it goes to the technical review committee, staff level, and then it goes, the site plan review goes directly to the city council, but it still gets to, to, um, two meetings. Just, oh, I'm sorry, just one. See, Michelle's leaving tomorrow. I'm still trying to figure all this out.
But the, the Tampa Road requirements only is a small facet of that property, whereas most of it's on Racetrack Road, which is not affected by the Tampa Road corridor, right?
It's my understanding the whole, the site needs to meet the Tampa Road.
Tampa Road require, well, okay. If they access Tampa Road, they have to meet it. So if all of a sudden he sold off, let's say, the front portion, then he wouldn't have to meet it, but then he wouldn't have access to Tampa Road, which everybody wants.
Okay.
But it is a requirement. We needed on and access to, because there were some properties that were kind of tucked back behind others, but they had an entrance from Tampa Road, almost like the Hampton Inn's, for example.
So even, even the Douglas Road portion is requi, would be, um...
It doesn't go as far as Douglas.
Oh, that's right. The bottom 13 acres. I stand corrected.
They've stopped the railroad.
Yep. I don't have any other questions. You've answered them all.
Um, I, I just was curious, um, what the city uses to determine whether something adversely or unreasonably affects the other use of property or conflicts with the needs of the neighborhood. Like, what is the benchmark to ascertain that?
So if you, if you look in the, in the staff report, we've listed the, um, the items that are directly in our land development code. So, you know, when we do the site plan review and then we look at a site plan, then city staff determines based on the applicant what those, how those requirements are met or not met.
I guess I'm, for this particular location, what are the things that the city's looking at that they would say would conflict with the needs of the neighborhood or adversely affect the other properties? I mean, do you have a, a, a list of things that you're not willing to allow to happen?
It's captured in that caveat of obnoxious, it's in the, it's under the C3 where prohibited of obnoxious, um, you know, fumes. Just trying to pick the words.
Bottom of page nine.
Yeah. Hey, any use that's obnoxious or offensive by, um, reason of odor, fumes, dust, smoke, gas, noise, or vibrations, or any, any other way or manner that affects the environment, so, you know, you brought up crematorium. That's a prohibited use in the city. You know, mattress, I think it was like mattress recycling is a prohibited use. Some of them are old fashioned from the olden days when, you know, smoke stacks were billowing and all that, but that's what...
So it would be limited to the prohibited uses listed here?
Yes, well, yes. And it has to be a permitted use.
Okay. And then the other question I had was answered already. Someone else asked it. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions. This is basically to make it match. Both of those sections max, match is what we're doing, right?
Well, it definitely, because it's contiguous, right? So it's a transitional zoning district. So I, I always think that it's really important to read the purpose of the zoning district at, at the beginning of the zoning district. So this one says, "The C3 Commercial Wholesale and Warehouse District is established to provide suitable areas for wholesaling, distribution, storage, and general services, and intensity requiring convenient access to principal thoroughfares and railroads." So we've got a piece of property that on the north side abuts a railroad, and on the south side abuts Tampa Road and Racetrack. And then this district is intended as a distribution and storage center for products sold, or serviced for retail and wholesale sales to a consumer, jobber, sales outlet, or wholesaler. Such district shall, so located in the community, as to ensure the heavy flow of heavy trucking to an area that will not be through residential districts. So when we're looking at it, you know, from a compatibility, um, um, standard, then that's why we're recommending that it gets approved, because it's adjacent to M1, it sits at a, at a thoroughfare, it's dozen of, it's not near residential districts. So I hope I answered your question.
You did. You did good. My, my second question is, and I, I may have been told this earlier, didn't get it. Are you taking Michelle's place?
I, I am not. You know, I'm the assistant city manager, but we don't have a new, um, Marie Dauphine is retiring at the end of the month, and Michelle's last day is tomorrow. So until we get the positions filled, you guys will see me.
I got nobody to talk to down there anymore.
And we have Tatiana.
If you have one person, it's so much easier. Felicia's gonna do it all.
Yeah, you guys can call me.
Thirty years developing these relationships, now they're all abandoned.
I know.
Congratulations, Marie.
Um, John, you had a question for the developer?
Yeah, I had a question for the developer. That's all right.
You have to be sworn in, too. And state your name and address.
Do you swear the testimony you were about to give? Is the truce will help you before God?
I do.
Thank you.
Chairman, board members? I was gonna make a couple of statements, or unless you have some questions first, however you'd like to proceed.
Your identity, please.
Oh, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg, Florida, representing the applicant.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, we'll go through the questions first, and then you can make a statement.
However you'd like to proceed.
Pat, you have anything going on?
I don't. I don't have it. No questions.
I have none.
Go ahead, John.
I'm okay asking the question after his...
After, after a statement? Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Do you have anything, Devin?
I'm good.
Jared?
All right. Thank you, sir. I would just make a couple of comments. We're very glad to have staff recommendation. That means, as you know, it came through the TRC as well. Uh, we've had absolutely no calls that we're aware of, or any neighbors or citizens who have raised any concerns or opposition. So those calls before you, very, very clean. No agency objections that we're familiar with or have heard of any. As you're aware, this is the southern portion of the property, currently zoned C2, so this is just a bump up one step to C3. It widens the uses a little bit, and ladies and gentlemen, you know, businesses are having a tough time. And it's gonna be many, many more months that this is gonna go on. This helps to expand the uses a little bit and, um, kind of capture some uses that may be out there, some of the smaller businesses, to make sure that they're covered completely by the code as well. It is an intensive site, as Michelle and Felicia have mentioned to you. There's no residential surrounding the site. Manufacturing is the abutting zoning category on the north. So it is a good transitional category from that use. So we feel very positive about the application before you, and we hope to have your support. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brenda?
No.
Jared?
I'm good.
Devin? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, my, my question is, um, you know, wel, welcome back, because I know you were here for the last meeting.
Always happy to come up to Oldsmar.
And, um, I wanted to ask, you know, I, I know la, last time you were here, you were looking for some rezoning. In this case, um, this rezoning is just for a portion of the property, and as you indicated, it... and as you indicated, it opens it up to more uses. Originally, the owner had some, some big ideas about how to, how this property could evolve. And as you indicated last time, and again this time, is, is the state of affairs is making that a little more challenging. Is the intent to parcel and sell off pieces of this property? Is that where we're headed now?
That is, that is not the intent at the moment, no. No. The answer is a firm no on that.
Do you have, are you, are you privy to share what, what the hope is for the site?
The hope is to keep it, to keep the site viable, quite frankly, and keep it as a viable business. That is a great hope.
Okay, so the owner plans to keep the property, as far as you know?
Correct, yes, sir.
That was, that was my primary question.
Thank you, sir.
Dale, you have anything for me?
No, sir, I do not. Good luck.
I have nothing for you, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. ...
But thank you for coming to talk to us.
Always a pleasure, thank you, appreciate your time.
At this point, what do you guys think? Want to go with a motion? Or discuss it a little bit more, how do you want to do it?
I have no further need for discussion myself. I'm comfortable with this change.
Is it appropriate for me to ask where, where he was going with his thinking there on that? With Johnny's questions? What were you, what were you thinking?
The reason that, the reason my questions came up is because, you know, we, we had, I think around the time where the property was being purchased, we heard a lot of great ideas of how the property was, was going to be planned out and built out. And so we've never seen a, a design that has been at least brought to our attention. And the zone, usually when I hear, hey, let's rezone it before, before there's a plan, to me that indicates that there's a possibility that they may want to increase the value of the land in order to sell it. And so that's why I asked those questions.
No, thank you.
To me, it's putting the cart before the horse a little bit, when you want, when you want...
But it gives a broader sales base.
And if you're in financial, in a financially challenging scenario, you're gonna try to do what you can to increase the value of the property so you can sell it.
Thank you.
So Michelle, they'll have, if they want to do anything with this property, they're gonna have to plat it, right? And if they plat it? Will we see the plat?
You would see the plat, like normal.
Okay. Just add that question to my mind that go on. So if they decide to do something, we'll see it before it's done?
Does that include...
Plats usually, we say it has to be platted by CO. So it would be in that point, could be moving along by the time you get to the plat.
What if the city doesn't like the plat?
That's the same, I guess that's the risk that the developer would take. Because really, the plat in this situation is just taking the four lots and making them into one.
Right.
So it's not, unless, you know, it was gonna be, let's say, it was a residential development with streets and all that other stuff, well, that would be a different type of plat. But right now, the way it would appear, it'd be just take the four lots, make it into one.
Disney Springs it ain't.
No. No, it's not. Anybody have anything else to say, any statements? Devin, what do you think? Nobody, all entertain a motion?
I did have a question. Did you say it's four lots right now? So if they, if they wanted to parse it out further, that would be another visit?
In the beginning, under property location?
The whole thing was comprised, the 19.46 acres had been platted as four lots, and he kind of made it into one for tax purposes, but didn't go through the formal city platting process.
And you still want the stipulations on the end of it? So entertain a motion.
Let's see, I move, we approve LUZ 20-06, Oldsmar Track LLC rezoning. Recommend the City Council authorize the attorney to prepare in ordinance rezoning from C-2 to C-3 Commercial and Warehousing Zoning District, along with staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Motion was made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
And against?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board members.
Motion passes. We're supposed to be talking about a chair and a vice chair for next year, but I'd like to put that off for at least a month, if that's okay with everybody?
Do we get more than us here?
You don't like your options, huh?
Well, we can always choose Bob, he's not here.
Ooh, that would fix him. He said never again.
Right.
I don't think we need a vote on that.
No. But we do need a vote on adjournment.
You have a question, before we go, do we know why the rooftop bar was taken off the dais today? The Simone Agreement? Sorry, I speak tongue in cheek. I was really psyched about the rooftop bar.
Yeah, I was too.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, it was, it was taken off by staff, and so discussions are continuing, and I, that's all I have to say right now.
That's all I'm gonna get, thanks.
Is it a car wash?
It's my birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I wore the tiara that I wore at school, but then I thought, oh, it's not quite. Thank you.
Thanks for celebrating with us.
Well, we would have brought more for you, you could have shared it.
I'm celebrating tomorrow. Actually, I had people doing construction at my house. I apologize that I didn't send that down, because it stopped right at me.
If you knew that, this is Michelle's last...
I heard, yes, yes.
And then tomorrow's the last day it works, for us anyway?
So will there be cake here tomorrow if we come back?
We're gonna have a temporary person in there until she decides to come back.
You and Michelle, so...
That's 15 years ago.
It's gonna be a big void here to fill. I'm sure you're working hard on that.
Thank you for all your service and...
Yes.
It's a delight, actually, thank you.
You're a good reader.
All the helpful explanations and just being here for us and... Thank you.
So what's the next move? What's the step? What are you planning?
We're canceling the cruises, so that's not worth it.
So no cruises for them? Where are you going?
Actually, across the street.
Oh.
Hernando County, different development. They owned land for 15 years and decided to...
Nice up there.
So...
Best of luck to you.
During, are we just gonna sit here and talk all night? I motion during June.
Second.
Motion was made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry I was late, I had...